I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council to order, please, for January 28th. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I do have a couple of announcements. First, the upcoming Town Council meetings, Thursday, February 11th is a regular Town Council meeting, seven o'clock, and Thursday, February 25th is a regular Town Council meeting. Our public hearing on the budget is the 11th, is that right? Okay, so we're not, we don't have any special meetings scheduled, okay. And I also have a statement I want to read as part of the announcements relative to PFOAs and St. Cobain. On June 4th of 2020, St. Cobain formally requested of the New Hampshire DES a one-year extension by variance of their February 11th, 2021 deadline to complete the construction and installation of a regenerative RT, excuse me, regenerative thermal oxidizer, an RTO, to control the air pollutants from their Merrimack plant. If granted, the one-year extension would have allowed the RTO to be installed by February 11 of 2022, next year. NHDES conducted a comprehensive review of the one-year extension petition request, including comments submitted by the Town of Merrimack and members of the public. Based on state law RSA 125 dash C colon 16, which says in part, quote, "No variance shall be granted to any person applying therefore who is causing air pollution which creates a danger to public health, welfare, or safety," unquote. NHDES declined to allow St. Cobain's requested extension. On January 11, 2021, just a few days back, one month before the RTO was required to be installed, and despite filing monthly RTO status reports with no mention of this fact, St. Cobain informed the town that the RTO will not be installed and operating to control its PFAS emissions by the permit deadline of February 11, 2021, and most likely will not be completed until June of 2021. The town is outraged by this news, which defies the terms of the permit and the New Hampshire DES's denial of an extension. We will continue to monitor NHDES's response and vigorously pursue any legal action available to protect the town's citizens and environmental resources from these ongoing toxic and illegal emissions. So just to let the public know, we're aware that they've said they can't make it, and we'll do whatever we have to do to make sure it gets worked out. Paul, did you have any announcements?
I just have one other announcement, Mr. Chair, thank you. The deadline for file filing petition warrant articles is Tuesday, February 9th. The deadline for filing petition bonds is Friday, February 5th.
February when?
5th.
5th.
So next Friday, week from tomorrow, deadline for filing petition bonds. Deadline to file petition warrant articles is February 9th, Tuesday, February 9th. Thank you.
So the difference is whether or not there's a money article attached to it, or?
The difference is if somebody's gonna file a petition for a bond.
Oh, bond specifically?
Bond specifically, not a money article, it's just for a bond specifically.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Sorry, I don't know why the state.
Has two different dates.
Has two different dates. It baffles me.
Four, four days apart, yeah, doesn't make a lot of sense. Any questions on the announcements? Or comments? Okay. Comments from the press and public? We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements, nor appointments or public hearings scheduled for tonight. Legislative updates from state reps. So I did receive a note from Representative Maureen Mooney, and she says, "Greetings, Town Councilors. Bills are starting to be heard in a hybrid, in-person and remote manner in the House and Senate committees." Prior to his passing, the late Speaker Dick Hench asked that I work with the Merrimack Citizens of Clean Water on two legislative issues. As a result, I'm the prime sponsor of HB 478, an act relative to treatment of PFAS contaminants in the drinking water of the Merrimack Village Water District. I have attached the full text of the text to this correspondence. Additionally, Lauren Allen of the Merrimack Citizens of Clean Water will submit a separate statement of support to you. In sum, the bill extends the operations and maintenance remedy in the March 2018 agreement between the Merrimack Village Water District and St. Cobain Performance Plastics. HB 478 calls for St. Cobain to pay, quote, "all costs associated with the continued operation, monitoring, and maintenance, and any necessary additional modifications thereto," unquote, and, quote, "all additional incidental operation and maintenance costs of Wells 4 and 5," unquote, "beginning on October 27th, 2025, and continuing for so long as the Merrimack Village Water District treats water in Wells 4 and 5 to comply with, quote, 'any existing or future water quality standards set for PFAS,' unquote." Note, the October 2025 date is five years from the installation of the GAC, GAC Filtration Treatment System in Wells 4 and 5. The cosponsors on this bill represent a cross-section of legislatures from both parties and leadership from across the state, as well as Merrimack. The cosponsors and I would like your support, especially at the upcoming hearing set for February 17, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. in the House Resources, Recreation, and Development Committee. Instructions to register support and/or testify can be found here, and she includes a link. Additionally, written testimony may be emailed directly to all House committee members via this email address, So it has one word, "houseresourcesrecreationalanddevelopment." Kind of long, we'll get it posted on our website so that people can find it there. Thank you for all you do, respectfully submitted, Representative Maureen Mooney. I don't see any other reps, do you have anything from, to add? Okay, same thing. Okay. So we can, we can bring this up on our next agenda item, I didn't hear about it till today. But if, if people are in agreement that we should support that, I think we could work on a letter of support from the Town Council, and we could certainly all independently do that as well, so. I'm not seeing any arguments or disagreements around the table, so. We'll proceed on that and plan to talk about it on the 11th. The meeting is on the 17th, I believe. Yeah, February 17th at 10:00. Town managers' report?
I have none tonight, thank you.
There's no consent agenda.
We're all tucked out.
I was gonna say. There is no consent agenda, so that brings us to old business. Number one, Turkey Hill Road, Babusik Lake Road intersection improvements, follow-up discussion, submitted by Deputy Public Works Director, Town Engineer Don Tomala, the Town Council to review and discuss the projected configuration and cost engineering estimates for the Babusik Lake Road and Turkey Hill Road roundabout rotary, whatever we call it. Hi, Don. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to let you know that at, I don't know, a week ago now, there were some questions about the roundabout slash rotary for Turkey Hill Road, and I had Don pull some information for you, and we handed that out earlier about, there was minutes taken when we did meet a public hearing with the residents. Don did take minutes and actually has their comments of those homes in that area. Don will be talking about the two roads that were impacted by where the roundabout would need to go. So she has all that for your presentation. And with that, take it away.
Hopefully that's on, there we go. Okay, so it was one year ago that I came before you, almost exactly, to ask which way you wanted to go, whether you wanted to do a roundabout or a T-intersection. So for the benefit, your benefit, and for those listening at home, I'd like to just back up, do a little bit of background because people might not have known. So the area we are working on is the intersection of Babusik Lake Road and Turkey Hill. Babusik Lake Road on your screen goes from left to right, or east to west. The Town Hall is off to the right, and Madeline Bennett and the school is off to the left. Turkey Hill is coming down perpendicular from that intersection. So that's the intersection that we are looking at. And if you recall, we have sight distance issues on that. We have a fence line, if you're coming from the east going to the west on Babusik Lake, there's a fence line. There's a curve in the road. If you're coming up Turkey Hill and you want to look back, it's very hard to see back, you're cranking your neck all the way around. And you also can see there's many turning movement, movements in the area, so people coming and going from different intersections. As a result of all of that, there are 33 accidents that had happened there from 2005 to 2019, which is about two to three a year on average. Three of them had personal injury, and the rest of them were between, you know, car accident and then some property damage on some of them. And there was one school bus that was empty but was also in an accident there. So there was no, no fentanyl.
Just at this intersection?
Just at this intersection, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the roundabout, as we, I had presented it a year ago, is traffic calming, it slows the traffic down. It improves the sight distance in all directions. It's, the definition, it defines the entry to the town center. If you look on the town center plan, which will actually come up shortly, that, it shows the entry to the town. It's a safer intersection, it has, if you do have an impact, if you do have a crash, there are actually low-impact crashes because the speeds are low. Everybody will be entering at the same angle. So last year, we had a concept that we had developed, and then we've been defining it and redefining it since then. And this is actually part of the final set of plans that we have for the roundabout. And it's actually become a little bit larger, we pushed it more to the east. We also looked at Glenwood Ave. There were a lot of concerns on, in that intersection. Glenwood is, can I get that, there it is. That one, right there. Think, okay. So since I was here last, we completed the field surveys. We advertised for a public hearing, we put out all the notices back in last February. We sent out letters to the residents along with that notice to about 35 in the area. So it was more than just what was abutting this actual intersection. So we sent out letters on, to people on Shady Lane, Evergreen, Glenwood, Joppa, Babusik, Conifer, and Balsam. So we tried to hit, you know, all of them that would be really affected in this area. We then held the public hearing on March 4th, and I took, we took all of the public input. And in between when I had advertised, started advertising, and the date of the actual public hearing, I did have several residents come in to me, and I showed them the plans, and I also took their comments into consideration. And I did a summary, which you had in your, one of your packets tonight. We also thought, we have not done a roundabout in this town. So we wanted to have a third-party review of that concept to make sure we were going down the right lane. So we had that done also, and they added some additional information. So with all of those comments, I then sent a letter to our engineer for all of the options that he could consider, or should be considering for doing this roundabout, including Glenwood Ave, or Lane. I'm always gonna call it Ave, I, excuse me, it's just. Shady, so Shady Lane is actually further up, way up down here. We're not impacting that, and we don't have any proposal to do anything on that road with, with this concept. Glenwood had a number of the residents out, especially the neighbors, you know, right here, abutting, which is totally understandable. We had originally shown kind of like a slip lane and coming in, and coming in more into the middle of Glenwood, or even towards the left a little bit. That was a concern because people come, are still able to come up and down Glenwood to be able to get to their homes, and there was a potential for a conflict here. So we had the engineer move the whole road over so it now aligns in the proper lane. Oops, what happened to me? There we go. So it now lines up in the proper, proper area where it should. Where'd my little mouse go? There's also a drainage issue in this area here, which we've, hopefully can address for the neighbor and help that problem there. So we will put here, which this plan unfortunately didn't have them shown, "Do not enter" signs. So nobody will be able to come out this way and to get to the roundabout. So this is a one-way-in-only. The other thing we did with this entrance was we made it more at 90 degrees so that people actually have to kind of slow down and stop to make this turn. This will discourage anybody from wanting to take that and to slip through. And if you looked on the overall plan, Joppa is not that far away, so going around the roundabout into Joppa to go out wherever they were going is not, I wouldn't say was, is out of the question. I mean, that, this will slow them down more to make this turn and to go through. We did, I already said we had made this a little bit larger, and we also had shifted this whole thing to the west a little bit from what you had seen it before. And we've had the speeds evaluated through here. These little lines in through here, these are just slope lines, so this is a fill area, basically. So it's coming up, just so you understand what those are.
Thanks.
So we did many concepts, many going back and forth, and we finally came up with the final plans, and then I asked for an estimate. Which, when I picked myself up from the floor, we then asked for an estimate of the T-intersection. Now, they did not do a design of the T-intersection, but they had a preliminary, you know, this is what it's kind of, kind of looked like. And we asked them to do a rough estimate from that, which they did. I then got that in, and then I spoke with one of the contractors, and he gave me his numbers, so I had quantities of what all the materials would be. So I took his numbers, and I plugged them into a spreadsheet, and I came up with another set of numbers. And then I went even further, and last month, I pulled the whole thing apart, and I started looking more in detail, where can we cut, what can we do? So I came up with our estimates. Just to remind you what the T-intersection looked like, this is it here, and this is the area where all the trees are right now. This parcel we already own, so we can use that, and that's where the roundabout will sit, is right in there. But the T would come in and come up into this area here. And here's a close-up of it, and this has a lot of conflicts. So if you go from Joppa Road, the center line of Joppa Road, all the way down to Glenwood, you've got about 400 feet. So we've got about 250 feet to this intersection, and then another 150 feet here. So we're now adding another set of turning movements in a very congested area. So here's the costs, this is what we came up with, the roundabout was $660,000. The T-intersection was 406. And we had budgeted in our Highway Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund, $300,000. So here is my dilemma.
There's your dilemma, yeah.
So options moving forward, do nothing. And I've already said what the accidents were. We have the roundabout design, you can go with that. Go back and look at the T-design, we'll have to have that engineered, that's more money. Or, another possibility is to work on other funding sources. I could go back to NRPC and try to get in their 10-year DOT plan, the 10-year plan for the DOT. However, they only open that up once every two years, and they just closed it in this fall because I just got the pedestrian bridge in at the time. So we're talking at least 12 years to even, or two years to even get, try to get on the plan, 10 years to actually come, have it come up for construction, and then probably another couple. So we're probably looking 14, 15 years out before anything would be done there, if we can get on that plan. But that is an 80/20 plan, so, you know, they would be paying 80%, we would be paying 20%.
Paul?
I do want to let the council know that if, either with the T-intersection or with the roundabout, in, roundabout, whichever way the council wants to go, if they want to proceed, there is money in the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund that we do have, that will, we can, we can afford to do these things. We just might have to push out a project or two later on in the CIP plan. But we do have the money to do the projects next year, or next construction season. We have about $1 million, $1.3 million in that capital reserve fund right now. So I just want to let the council know that. But we just have to push some of the projects out on the back end.
Okay, let me ask another quick question. Since we've just finished discussing all the budget for next year, is this something that has to go into the budget?
No, it's not, because this is a capital, this is in the capital reserve funds, and the council can take this, has to take this off-budget and approve it in a meeting such as this.
So we can go forward with it, taking the money out of the capital reserve fund, but replenishing the fund requires a warrant article, right? Putting money in the capital reserve fund?
Yes, putting money into it is a warrant article, taking money out is just a meeting with the Town Council approving it.
Okay, thank you. Are you done, or?
I'm done.
Oh, no. I was hoping you'd have some Hail Mary that you could send for us.
Well, I made some pictures.
You're nothing roundabout in transaction. So you said that there's, there's been 33 accidents there over the past 15 years, or 16 years, something like that?
My numbers ranged from 2005 to 2019.
Okay, so 15 years roughly. 14 years. 33 accidents, and three of them were involved, physical injuries.
No fatalities.
No fatalities, yeah. But that's specifically at that fork in the road, not including Joppa Road?
Correct.
Does, are there, you were indicating this is a busy, busy area. Do you have, do we have any numbers for Joppa Road intersection, or?
I went to ask NRPC to do that last year, and COVID hit.
Oh.
So they did not do it because we would not have gotten true numbers. And even today.
There has to be, because I take my life in my hands every time I try to cut across there to Joppa Road, but.
But even still, they're still saying, as I go to the T-TAC once a month, and they're still saying we're still at about 80%, 85% of what the traffic was prior to COVID.
Well, yeah, right now, it's.
Right now, yeah, still, so we still haven't come back.
Stay there.
No, but we still haven't gotten back up to 100% yet.
Right, no, I understand. Finley, did you have something?
I do, but there's no doubt we're not up to 100% because traffic jams down on 495 and 3 are really pretty mellow these days, so. The area, even beyond the traffic, it's a busy intersection, busy section because of all the entrances. Coming southbound on Joppa Road, maybe, you know, turning into there, it's an awkward, there's a little crest of a hill coming from the west, and it's, it's an awkward jump across to continue on Joppa, extension there. I mean, the pricing is definitely more than I'd remembered, I thought it was 2 and 3. But I can appreciate it, it was a thumbnail thing, you know, cocktail napkin or whatever, but it's, I'm still kind of leaning to the rotary because, because of all these impacts and slows it down. The accidents that you have were reported accidents. There could be a boatload of, you know, bumper impacts that nobody reports, they just deal with it through their insurance and so on, so. I, I'm not sure, there's no way of knowing what that might be, but, but it is a difficult area for all the reasons we've seen.
Peter?
I'm in favor of the roundabout. I think that one, I don't think we should leave it as it exists, I think.
Sure.
Oh, sorry. I'm in favor of the roundabout. I don't think we should leave the existing decision as it exists. I know we got the stats for the accidents over 10 years. I can tell you that in my 32 years with the police department, and I commuted that road several thousand times, that's a bad intersection. I've seen very bad accidents, you see near misses. My issue with the T-intersection is, I, it's $400,000. Yeah, it's less than the roundabout. But I think in 10 years, we're gonna be revisiting this issue with a T-intersection. And as Don pointed out in her graphic, you've got all those turns, left turns, right turns, where they, where traffic patterns cross. And I think that when the morning, when, in school session, is in session, and you're gonna see that traffic back up even farther than it does now. The other thing I see is, it's my experience, that traveling, I commuted, I spent many years from, traveling from Pearson Road into Bedford behind the Manchester Country Club, where they put in that, on Galt Road, that roundabout, it's a rotary bill, rotary there. But the, I watched them from the construction of it and the finish of it, and I'm still going through it to this day. It's very easy to go through, you don't have any problems. It has a significant amount of traffic at the rush hours, traffic flows. And, you know, that used to be a very bad intersection there. So for those reasons, yeah, I'm in favor of it, and I like the fact that Paul said we have some money already aside. So to me, we've got the $300,000. For all those reasons, I think it's, it's good. I think we're throwing, if we make a T-intersection, I think we're throwing good money after bad, I think is the way it goes, so. So thanks.
Okay, Barbara?
Don, if, if I'm on, if I'm the homeowner on the corner of Babusik and Glenwood, how do I get out of there in the morning? If I can't take a left and get into the roundabout, because it's a one-way into Glenwood?
So they have to go up and then take a left?
So I gotta go like over the river and through the woods to get out of my house?
It's not that far, it's not that far.
It's 7:00 o'clock in the morning, it might be. You think, you know what I'm thinking. You know, and granted, it's at 16, 33 accidents over 16 years, that's like two per year. School backups are not gonna be any worse than they were before COVID. I'm still not, a year later, I'm still not in favor of the roundabout. I know I'm gonna lose this one, but that's okay.
So this is Glenwood, to answer your question, so these would be the two houses here. So they'll have to come up and go over here, and this is Joppa, this is Joppa right here. So they can go one way or the other way.
I'd be selling my house.
Yes, but yes, they will.
They, they'll have to.
Those four houses will have to come up.
Yep, and go all the way around about.
Yes.
No pun intended, to get out of there.
Yeah. And, let's see, 4, 6, whatever this, it's hard to see.
If I were to go up Glenwood and take a left road, am I on there?
This is Shady.
Okay.
Shady Lane, so that's the one we're not doing, proposing anything.
Can I get out that way?
Yes.
So, but either way, it's almost the same length, you know, distance.
And I did have extensive talks with the fire department, and they did not want to block it, because that was one of the options that the owners wanted, was to completely block it. The fire department did not want that. They did not want a gate. So we took all of the different options that you saw, we tried to put them together. Nobody's gonna have 100% of what they wanted, but hopefully somebody will, everybody will get a little something of what they want.
Well, I am happy the engineers realized that the roundabout needed to be a little bigger to get the bigger trucks through there, because that was a concern.
It does handle a WB67 at this point.
Because I was a little worried about that.
I haven't seen too many of those come out through that way, though.
Yeah, exactly, it's kind of residential, it's not gonna fit.
So, Don?
Barbara, can I ask why you're against the rotary?
You know, I have just had so many near misses in my life, having grown up in Massachusetts where rotaries are commonplace, you know, and even my dog. where rotaries are commonplace, you know, I, and even my dog, Border, is over, um, in Hollis, and I have to go through the rotary over there, and that one is very, very small, it's very tight. And I swear, I don't know if it's me, maybe I attract it, but I always feel like I'm a target when I go through them.
Okay.
And so, I have to feel like if, I'm not the only one who feels that.
Gotcha.
They really have to back off a little bit and look at the traffic and really kind of gauge it. I feel very insecure going through them.
I was a curious test, too.
Yep.
Okay, Don, could you summarize for us some of the opinions as far as blocking the road is concerned? Why would people want it blocked? Do you recall? I mean...
I did not.
I suspect it's because it, it, Independence Drive has been used as a thoroughfare in the past. I don't know that it's really, I'm not sure if it's still a big deal or not, I haven't heard about that in a long time, but I think those folks were concerned about that, the right turn, um, to cut through, to get over to Joppa.
Yeah, they were concerned about a lot of traffic coming through, and they didn't want, you know, their children, if they're out in the area.
But that road goes to Joppa as it is today, why would it be, why would it be more encouraging to somebody?
That's a legitimate question.
To skip the rotary? I mean, the rotary there is not a big deal.
The way we had it originally, it was kind of more like a slip road, so it would have been easier to, to go that way. The way we've now got it adjusted, you have to stop and make a right-hand turn.
Yeah, so it discourages that.
It discourages that, yes.
Paul, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, to answer your question, one of the neighbors said, um, "Traffic is moving quicker in the neighborhood, people are using shady lane in Glenwood, Glenwood, Glenwood to cut through on Saturdays for the dump, to make it quicker to go to the dump, because they're coming up Turkey Hill, and instead of taking a left and go right down Joppa, they're going up, taking a quick left into shady of Glenwood and cutting through to come back to Joppa to go down." So, that's one of the reasons why, and because of the kids playing in that neighborhood, they would, that's why they wanted the road closed, one of them. The other one, um, is, is basically saying, rather see it as a den-in for safety of the children. Most of that was safety of the children, that's why they wanted the road closed, for safety of the children, because they feel that people are going to try to use it, or have been using it as a cut-through to get to Joppa.
So, they weren't complaining that they weren't able to come out in the morning at seven AM, and that they would have to go around a block to get out? They were complaining, they were, they were more concerned on reducing the traffic on their street?
Correct.
And safety issues, yeah, basically.
Yeah, the children, it's, the, the three comments that I just read on this page is all about their chi- children, and you only have people flying through their little street as a cut-through.
I, I mean, that's, coming up Turkey Hill and going up Joppa to the dump is what I do, and it never occurred to me to consider going out of my way to go to Glenwood, and I mean, that seems like a crazy route to me, but...
Exactly, you can go that way, but that's what they're saying, they're using it as a cut-through.
I mean, I, I will admit that Joppa and Turkey, and Babusick Lake is, is complicated to get across sometimes.
Yes.
But I, I would never have thought of going that much further around. I mean, that, that takes and doubles the thing that you're concerned about, I'm...
Yeah, but they have to go all the way around.
Anyway. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions. Don, thank you for your presentation. Can, can you explain, or, or help me understand why Glenwood Lane is coming in off of Babusick Lake as opposed to channeling traffic out and making it one-way coming out?
We looked at that, um, and we did have one option when the roundabout was a little bit smaller, but due to the size of the roundabout, and we had to make it a little bit larger, that shifted the whole thing more to the west in order to get the area in there, to fit everything in properly and with all the grading. Um, we did try to, to come out, it, it adds another element right at that intersect, right at, at the roundabout where you don't really want to have another, uh, fifth, a fourth turn coming into there. It's hard enough getting the three through.
See, I would argue that by creating that right-hand turn going in, and the fact that you're, you testified to us that you specifically made that a ninety-degree angle so that it would calm traffic making that right-hand turn, there's almost a proclivity of creating somebody rear-ending that's not, somebody's not paying attention, as opposed to somebody coming out, where they've got to look to the left, and they've got to see traffic coming to their left. There's one way that they got to go, and that's to the right. And to me, even though, and I appreciate, because I'm not the engineer, I appreciate where you're coming from, I, in the narrowing that you're talking about, I still think minimal traffic would be co- would be coming south out of Glenwood onto Babusick Lake Drive, and because there's only one way to go, they're going to be paying attention to traffic coming from the east. And once they know the traffic is, has gone by, it would be very easy for them to make the merge into the rotary and be able to traverse wherever they want to go, to the transfer station, do the complete three sixty to head to DW, however they want to do it. Because I, I'm, I'm concerned, because I do support the rotary in concept, I absolutely do. I think it, it's, it's a much better design than, than the T echoing what Council Albert say about the queuing that could potentially occur on Turkey Hill. I like the concept of, of the rotary there. I'm just, I'm not sold on directing traffic off of Babusick Lake onto Glenwood. I re- I really would prefer that we can, that it be recontemplated, bringing traffic out of Glenwood onto Babusick Lake, because there's only one way that they have to go. And I think that's a better, for me, I think there's, there's better control for traffic, making that merge at that location, as opposed to something that has to make that right-hand turn onto Glenwood, which is probably going to be infrequent, you know, I'll concede the point. But if we look at the testimony of people using shady in Glenwood as a cut-through, I would think we would want to try and mitigate that as best as possible. That's how, that's how I'm rationalizing it.
Well, then, then you have, if they've got a fire, they're going to have to be going around further to be able to get to that, that spot. And we did look at that option, um, and I don't have that concept here with me tonight, because it just, it did not work, it did not work well.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead, I've talked three or four times tonight's long story. Go ahead.
Lot?
Yeah, I, I understand that these kinds of changes bring about certain frustrations and certain concerns and whatever, but I totally agree with Councilor Albert, um, in terms of the longer view. I won't be around to see it, but, um, for the life of me, I can't see spending half the loaf to do half the job. Um, I don't frequent that stretch of road a lot, but I have seen it when, uh, the high school is opening and, you know, the morning, um, crush that we've all talked about. Also, in the afternoon, when the high school is exiting, it jams up going west, I guess. And I'm not about to, um, second-guess all the good work you've done over the last year in terms of it. I'm totally in favor of the roundabout. I've had a recent lesson in capital reserve funds and putting money aside ahead of time for these kinds of concepts. This one fits all of what we've talked about very, very well. Yes, the roundabout's more expensive. Yes, some people are going to have to change their patterns, and I know that's difficult for the individual person, but for the good of everything, let's go, let's go roundabout.
I thi- as far as the through-traffic, I, I can appreciate their concerns, I know Independence, the reason that was the problem is when traffic backed up in the morning for the, all the students and the traffic going into the school district, uh, it backed up to that point. So, they would come off Joppa Road, bank through Woodland Park, take the right on Independence, and get ahead of traffic, and that's why they were doing that. This, I think it's a relatively easy fix. We have a couple of other places, I think it's Joe Allen Drive, I think it is, it parallels, uh, Amherst Road, uh, and we had to put no-through-traffic for certain times, and they monitored it for a little while, the police department did, and, and I mean, I'm sure some people still go through it, but they, you know, they've mitigated that problem to a great degree. Uh, and there is a cross, a traffic officer there to help expedite that, but, but I think it should be signed in that, you know, s- no-through-traffic and, uh, you know, to help away some of the concerns.
And that we can, can certainly look at, but when it's time to...
When it's time, yeah.
Yep.
Bill?
Thank you. Uh, Don, coming back to the roundabout and the islands that are in the middle of the road that separate the lanes?
That's a good question, are those islands or paint?
That will, there's...
They're concrete islands.
Okay, so that...
And then, and some paint, but the lighter spots, if I can get my...
So, that was going to be one question, then the question was, if it's concrete, are we using straight concrete, are we going to use granite curbing around the island, and how far off the ground is it going to be to?
Right now, everything is granite curb, is what we've proposed, because they hold up the longest. The asphalt curbing does not hold up and...
I, I agree with you.
Um, so that's what we have proposed, and they're probably about six inches.
They're going to be six inches up off the ground?
A, a normal curbing.
So, no, if you choose to jump in, you're going to lose your suspension? Okay, no, that...
Or your alignment.
Or your alignment, to, to pick one.
And the...
Or your tires.
Is there, is there going to be si- are, are we proposing signage there as well, or are we just?
Yes, there'll be signs.
There'll be signs, okay.
I didn't propose, bring the whole package, I mean, I have a whole set of plans, if you'd like.
Okay, Peter?
John, um, I've read the report, it was attached here, oh, sorry, again, I read the report, uh, from Fuss and O'Neil, who, um, did the con- conceptual review for the rotary, and, um, I, I noticed that they are recommending the, that the proposed plan actually expands to, from one hundred and ten to one hundred and twenty-five, so in this new plan, it, that's, that's expanded, okay, good. Um, one of the things I, I liked, I saw in there, and they talked about, I believe you talked about it, was, um, a roundabout will give us better visibility, and so that, that's another reason, I think, from a T-intersection. And the other question I had, and I did see the note about a class five roadway, but like Bill's talking about, I'm wondering, and it, and it looked in like some of the comments, that some of the folks on Glenwood, and maybe I, correct me if I misread it, but they were seeking that that road be closed off.
Yes.
And it would seem to make sense, instead of having that little turn there, close it off and create a little cul-de-sac at the end of it.
There's no room for a cul-de-sac and no room for a turnaround.
Uh, without taking people's property.
Yeah, I mean, do you have to put a circle on the end of it if you close it off?
If you want to plow it and maintain it and turn around and...
All right, I'm just trying to think out of a box a little bit. I do not want to plow it.
Believe, believe me, we...
I'm sure.
A number of us were around the table.
Yeah, so, just seeing that, I wanted to point that out, thanks, okay.
Nancy?
Just want to express my opinion, I agree with the roundabout concept. Um, I think it is calming, that, I don't even know what you'd call that, would you call that an intersection, the way it is now? It really is treacherous, I, from every perspective, so we have to do something. Um, and I think the T-intersection, it really doesn't solve anything, because you still have the alignment, the site issue going down Babusick Lake, and you have a lot of cross-traffic then. So, I, I think the only alternative we have is a roundabout. So, I concur with that, so, that plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don, back to the Fuss and O'Neil report, um, for my colleagues, it's going to be bullet point number three on the report under designed vehicle. The memorandum talks about the standard bus forty performed all movements in the roundabout, then it goes on to talk about WB, WB forty and WB sixty-two. I was wondering if you could explain to me the difference from, I'm assuming a standard bus forty is forty pupils or forty people, and the, and the WB is a different classifications? I just want to, if you could explain that to me.
Yes, they're different classification, different size vehicles.
Okay.
So, your sixty, sixty-two is a tractor-trailer truck.
So, that begs the question, how often do we have, I know that we have, that there are signs posted regarding trucking on certain roads, I guess, I guess the question is, what are, what are the off-chance of, of an eighteen-wheel going down Babusick Lake Road?
You'd have them going down for moving vans?
Okay.
That would be one thing. They show up in different places.
They do, moving vans.
They get lost, they, you know...
Yeah. I mean, it's not frequent, it's not like...
No.
It's not frequent, but infrequently, there will be that, that occasion.
I travel that road almost every day, one way or the other way, or both ways sometimes, and I don't think I've ever seen a tractor-trailer truck out there, but we have to be able to design for it, to accommodate it.
What about some of the, the one-ten provision trucks, or beer trucks?
They're, they're smaller, so...
Is that a WB forty, or?
WB forty would be more like a school bus.
School bus, okay.
And also, I believe, uh, one of our fire trucks is that size.
Okay.
We used to design for WB fifty, but they've now upped it, um, in recent years, to WB sixty-two.
Okay, and, and confirming, as I saw, um, Chief Duke's comments are in here, fire trucks will be able to navigate that rotary going to and for all?
Yes, that was one of our questions to the consultant, to make sure that everything possible could get around, that needed to get around that, you know, for what we have out there.
Okay.
I mean, there were bigger trucks, believe me.
Oh, I know that, I know that.
But that's where we're at.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. So, bringing up school buses, I'm just curious if we've had any feedback from the school department, since they worry so much about how fast their cars and their buses can get down that street?
I was more worried about the cost, I have not put the final, final plan in.
If they didn't come to you, that's all I'm asking, I wasn't asking us to reach out to them necessarily. And we've talked about it, there's been public hearings, they would know about it.
I certainly can, can ask them, show them the plans, but I had not at this point, because I didn't know which direction you wanted to go in.
If a truck could get by a school bus?
A, a school bus can get by, but, I mean, they've given us so much grief in the past about Madeline Bennett and...
Or the speed of getting by.
Well, and, and that's fine, I just, I figured this would be another opportunity for them to come...
And...
I was curious.
They do receive our, our agendas like we receive theirs, so they, they would know about it.
And I did pass twenty-six buses the other morning coming in, going out.
I'm sorry, what?
I did pass twenty-six buses going out to Madeline Bennett when I was coming in the other morning. I counted them.
I'm sure. They, they can tell you that that's exactly the number that they have. Okay, any other questions? We have this listed as just a discussion, or can we make a, can we go forward with it, or?
Um, it's a review and to discuss the projected configuration cost engineering estimate, so, yeah, if you want to move ahead with a roundabout or a rotary.
That's what I'd like to do, I don't know what the council would like to do, but...
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I hate to be the fly in the ointment, but I really would like to see the engineering for Glenwood Lane coming out onto Babusick. Like I said, I hate to be the fly in the ointment, but I just, I'm, I appreciate what, what Mrs. Tamal has presented tonight, and, you know, she has a vast array of experience in doing her job, and I don't mean to question that, but I guess I would like to, I guess I would like that.
You are questioning it.
I'm sorry?
You are questioning it.
I understand that, but I just, I...
And Fuss and O'Neil, and, and however many other people have looked at it.
I understand, there's been a lot of people with more degrees than I have, I just, I would, you know, I guess I'd, I'd like to see it.
The difficulty is, what I think happens, if we do that, is that the fire department may as well have a gate there, because they can't get in, they'd have to go around, which is what, why they don't want a gate or a dead end. So, I think it would put us back in that position where, while there won't be a barrier, the turn configuration, the truck couldn't get, make it around, uh, that turn, because I'm imagining that you would have it angled so that it forced the car to head, uh, west. West? that it forced the car to head west. West? Anyhow, towards Joppa Road.
I think there's a lot of good reasons to keep it the way it is.
There's gonna be more conflict coming out the other way, but you've only got, whatever, four or six houses going, to go in, and that same coming out, so.
We have more than four or six coming out, because you have further down into the subdivision, right? That, that might wanna come out. And the conflict coming out, going straight into that rotary.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be tough, yes.
And if that concrete barrier's going down there, people aren't coming from Turkey Hill and taking a left on Glenwood.
They won't be able to take a left.
Really is disrupted if you do that.
If you do that, that's why, that's why the original one you brought for us.
Because if you come out and you're trying to take a left, you're doing cross-traffic.
They, they will have to go around the rotary, there is no choice.
So they'll have to get out and go around, okay.
They have to go around.
They have to go right.
There's no choice. There's too short a distance in there.
360 to go to DW, if you have them coming out one way, coming out onto Babusak?
Right, they have to turn the other way and come around back.
But it's a very short street, right?
It's a short street, yes.
And, and the reason, I think also, like they've been said, and I don't wanna beat the dead horse on this, is the fire department. The fire department would have to go down Shady Lane, come through the neighborhood, and then bang the left to get to Glenwood, or they would have to go around the rotary to Joppa and backtrack through, to get to the neighborhood, whereas if it's a, if it's an entrance, they, because, remember where our fire station's coming from? They're coming west on Babusak to get there. So they would just go and then take the quick right, and they're in the neighborhood. They don't have to go around the rotary, they don't have to deal with any of that traffic. Leaving is a different story, but getting to the scene and securing the scene, they can get there a lot quicker by then going around. And, and it isn't, it isn't like driving a sports car where, you know, it's no big deal in my truck to go that extra couple of turns. When you're driving a, a truck, you gotta, you gotta take the turn, take the turn, take the turn, and it slows down their response time. Now, I don't know how much, because I'm not a firefighter, but that is one of the concerns that the fire department had, and that's why they made that more of a right-hand turn to get into it, instead of a, instead of the out-only. Because they did look at that, and that was a comment made by the fire chief, to make that an in and not an out. Okay, Peter?
Dawn, it's a minor detail, but I'm kinda curious. I know that the rotary is, the paved rotary, but the inner circle, is that cobblestone, or what's that gonna be made of?
Okay, so the, where's my mouse pointer? All right, so this is pavement coming around the darker.
The darker, yeah.
The inside, where we've got the little speckles.
Yep.
That is concrete. And the inside, inside is actually a lom.
Is what?
Lom and seed.
Okay.
It can be a little decorative.
Yeah, I think that.
Yes.
I mean, later down the road, it's, it's a minute, you know, but I, I think we've put this here, and I think they ought to do something aesthetically pleasing for those people who live on it at some point. Nothing, you know, obviously nothing extravagant, but let's not make it an eyesore either.
What we'll have, where'd my little?
Are you suggesting a statue of you wearing your police officer's directing traffic? You know, like this, holding like this?
I had some ideas.
I figured, okay.
You know, bronze statue. We'll talk about that later.
We'll talk about what position you'll be in later.
Well, what we will have is the sidewalk is staying up where the sidewalk is right now. So we'll have another green spot in between the rotary and the sidewalk and the house. So there's more green. And also on this side here, and along, all the way in through here, this, this is just a slope. So that's green, it's grass.
Can, can we put a no campaign sign there?
I was just gonna, I just literally said, where are people gonna put their campaign signs now?
And then on, on this side over here, I can do some drainage treatment, so, so this will also be green over here.
Is that concrete raised? Is that six inches up with granite curbing?
Going around the circle?
In the circle.
No, no, it's, it's, I've got a small lip for.
It's a small one, so if.
This is for the trucks.
The fire trucks going through, they can go through fast and.
Yes. Well, I don't know about fast, but they can go around and.
Makes it wide enough.
It'll be like, it'll be like the rotary at Nashua South, headed to Hollis.
I don't know if I've been around that one.
Okay.
I've been to the Bedford one plenty of times, I go through, I use that quite often.
Okay, okay.
I just was wondering, Dawn, do you, would you happen to know approximately how much more for a cobblestone apron versus a concrete? Because I'm imagining that might be a little more aesthetically pleasing.
It might be, but there's also more maintenance with that.
Really?
Yeah.
I mean, cobblestone roads in Europe have been around for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of years.
We, we could prob, you know, possibly look into stamping of the concrete, like they do, but it's more money, it's more money.
Concrete stamping, right?
Concrete stamping, so it's.
If it's painted, that's a wear thing, and that's why, that's why I, when Peter mentioned make it look good, I started, you know, contemplating that.
Maybe we could bring in a Lego model.
Was that a motion? I'm, I'm looking for a motion to either approve a roundabout or go with.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table, made by Lon, seconded by Nancy, to approve the plans as presented and go forward with a roundabout, post haste, using money out of capital reserve. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Barbara, any abstaining? So that passes 6-1-0 with Barbara Healy in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the work you've been doing on this, and the effort to keep as many people informed as possible.
Only a year.
So surely we're getting rid of all of the quick angle turns in town and making them something. But I think, I think the roundabout's a, a good way to go there.
Okay.
Oops. Yeah, that one's been on the list for a long time as well. Okay, bringing us to new business. Number one, 2021 Transportation Alternative Program application, submitted by Deputy Public Works Director, Town Engineer Dawn Tomala. Review of the proposed sidewalk project for the new round of TAP applications, Daniel Webster Highway between Sahigan Road and Merrimack 360.
So we've been waiting for this.
Okay.
And a few weeks ago, the state did announce that they would have another round of what we call TAP grants, which is Transportation Alternative Program. This is round number four. We actually had the predecessor of a TAP grant previously, so we've been in this program and received many of these. So.
Many of them?
Many of these TAP grants.
We've received many, I only know two.
We have, we've had three.
Can you identify them? Mr. Quiz.
Yes. Daniel Webster Highway, by Buckley's, that was one. It was pre-TAP grant, so it was, it's, it's predecessor. We had the 2014, which is the Sahigan Trail path underneath the, underneath Daniel Webster and out connecting into the path. I had gotten one my first year when I was here for Woodbury Street and for Daniel Webster, two pieces of the master plan. That, unfortunately, we found the 2014 Sahigan Trail needed more money. So we ended up not doing my project and putting project money, I got into that project, so we have enough to be able to do that project, which is still ongoing. And every time we turn around, the state wants another study, another this, another that, and it's, it's been frustrating. But anyway, we're getting there. Inch by inch, we are getting there. And hopefully, we can go out to bid shortly, but.
Okay.
We'll see.
All right, thank you.
I'm not gonna hold my breath. So, the next round, and in listening to all of the conversations for the last year here, one thing that the TAP grant is like, it likes to see is a plan behind what you wanna propose. So they don't want you just coming in and saying willy-nilly, we wanna do something here, we wanna do something there. Well, as luck would have it, the Town Center Committee in 2009 had created this plan of the Town Center. So in this plan, you'll find there's many areas have been highlighted, and there's different numbers throughout here, and they prioritized at the time their different sidewalks and trails. So I, we have been using this plan to be able to do connections per this plan, and that's where we've been getting our, our feed for the, the TAP grants. So this one, we decided to start down, and my cursor isn't working anymore. So anyway, down where the yellow circle is down on the bottom right of this map. And I blew that area up. So I started with number five and number seven as part of, thank you.
To the rescue.
Yes, I know.
Maybe. There you go.
To the rescue.
Okay. So, we're gonna start with, I started with those two. And then in listening to you, I know you wanted to try to get sidewalks all the way down to Merrimack 360, the plaza. It's like, okay, this round will actually allow us up to $1,250,000 more than what we've asked for in the past. So Town Center Committee, as luck would have it, met in December, and they prioritized some of their, what they wanted to see. So I took the top three. And the top one they had was Twin Bridge Road, which is from Route 3, Daniel Webster, down to the Twin Bridge Park Trail, which is the beginning of a trail that leads all the way down into Wasserman, or Watson Park, sorry. The next one was Fraser Square, which is railroad Ave to the Rite Aid Crosswalk, which you'll see is what I've highlighted. So that's number five and number seven on, on their plan. And the Babusak Lake Road, which is out here from the library up to O'Gara Drive. Now, I had proposed that in the last go-around of TAP grants, which we did not receive. And I did that so that we would connect the sidewalks down at Daniel Webster with the new bridge that's gonna be going over Babusak Lake, because they will be putting in, the state will be putting in as part of that bridge, a sidewalk on both sides of that bridge. So we wanted to be able to connect, and that's gonna be one of the requirements. At some point, we need to connect our sidewalk system into that sidewalk. So that's why I had proposed that in 2018. But unfortunately, I missed that by one or two people. They only took so much, they only have so much money, and the cutoff was, and so we just missed that, unfortunately. So anyway, that's passed. So I put together this little sketch, the top, starting with the number five and number seven from the Town Center Committee, and then all the way down through, and this building down here is that Merrimack 360. And you've got, actually, 3,600 feet of sidewalk all the way up. And that's what all those little.
Which none exist today?
Yes. So when I bring this up, so we can actually, like, see what's going on, here's the two little pieces. This building here and this building here have sidewalks already in front of them.
Okay.
This little empty triangle piece, and I should've highlighted it for you, and I didn't, that's under site plan review presently.
Right.
Their proposal will put a sidewalk in through there. So the areas that are, already have sidewalk or are gonna be proposed, I'm going to take out of this proposal, at least for right now. So we'll start basically at this point, and then come down the west side of Daniel Webster Highway, all the way down, as far as we can go. And I can't say that the $1,250,000 is gonna make it all the way, it's going to depend what we run into. I will tell you that we don't have any wetlands crossings, which is a big problem. We don't have any soil, hazardous soil areas that I'm aware of. Our problems are gonna be right-of-way. How wide is the right-of-way, and do we need to take, get easements from the people? That's going to be, you know, the expense of this. But we're going to put in this project for as much money as we can get, and that's the maximum that we can get. So we wanna put in as much as we can and go as far as we can go with that, because otherwise, it's gonna be a lot of $200,000 sidewalk projects for many, many years, because it won't go that far.
Dawn, also on that strip, you've got a section of sidewalk in front of the World Gas Station that they put in, and from the car wash to the, there's a section of, from the car wash to the 360.
There are little sections, and we won't do those, you know, unless they're in.
You won't have, yeah.
I, I have only begun to put this together. This just came out, but it's, the letter is due next Friday. So I need to, I need to have that letter in, and then I can start looking at it a little bit closer. But I just drew something up so I could get into, to talk to you about it before we go too far. So this is the last section of it, and again, this is the 360 building down here. So that's about where we would end. And yes, there's nothing in this section, but I think there is a couple little sections, but they're very small within the way. But we'll have to, again, we'll have to take a look at it, see what condition they're in, see how we're gonna, there's a lot of work to be done with that. So as far as the TAP application, we have to submit the letter of interest, or the LOI, and a map, which I just showed you, showing the areas of interest. The other part that I have to submit are letters of support, and they're all due next Friday. So that's why I'm here tonight, asking you for, one, allowing us to put this application in, and two, for your support and for a letter. The next thing I have to do is to attend mandatory pre-application meetings, which are gonna be by Zoom, so I don't even have to leave the building. That will be nice. Usually have to go to Concord for those. And then the submission of the TAP application. Now, we don't get the date for when that is due until we have the meetings, and they give us more details. But this application is not a, just a couple little pages. I usually have a notebook worth of information for this. And like I said, our maximum amount can be $1,250,000.
Did they, did they get more funding this time around than they have in the past? They've raised that number, or are they just?
I don't think so.
They just raised the number, so.
They just.
They're still gonna try and spread it out as much as they can, so we might easily not even get that $1,250,000.
It's, yes, and we have to apply, and the next thing I have to do after we apply is actually do presentations for the project and sell it. And there's a lot that have to go into it, so we have to meet certain criteria in order to do it, and they score you on these criteria. It's not a simple application, so.
No, I understand. Peter?
Dawn, I don't know if it was you that came before us, but a few months ago, I wanna say we had a presentation regarding the NRPC, and they had their master plan for Route 3, to include bike lanes and so forth and all this stuff.
Yes. Yes, that is another plan. I have not, I have not looked at that in depth, and that could be part of this also. But if we do that, we're not gonna get the sidewalks that you want. So, you know, it's gonna be a trade-off, and we're not gonna do a little section of bike path, because that doesn't make any sense. Right, and, you know, you'd have to do the whole road.
And I was thinking about that, and I'm thinking, all right, as much as that would be nice, are we gonna end up with a conflict at some point, putting in the sidewalk over there?
I will, I will look at that plan. I believe I have a copy of it, or at least I have a version of it. I will look at it. It seems to me, if I remember right, the bike path was on the east side, the right side. And if we're putting the sidewalks on the left, then we should, but I, I don't know. I haven't looked at it that much.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Bill?
Go ahead.
So, how much would the town have to come up with? If, say we get the entire grant, if we're that lucky, we're not, but how much would the town have to come up with?
It's an 80-20 split.
Okay.
Did I do the math? No, I didn't do the math.
I'm sorry.
250,000 or something like that.
Do we have it? How would we budget that?
Probably come out of the Capital Reserve Fund.
It's usually in the Capital Reserve.
I'm just asking these questions so we're not taken by surprise.
If, if the 214, 2014 one is, is any kind of a guide, it's gonna be probably five or six years before we'd actually get the money and, and move forward unless, I mean, we probably don't have to do as many Indian artifact research studies and things like that for sidewalks, but. I mean, we probably don't have to do as many Indian artifact research studies and things like that for sidewalks, but-
Don't laugh.
I know, I'm, you might, who knows?
Paul?
Twenty percent would be just over three-hundred thousand dollars. Because the total project is about one-point-six million. Eighty percent of, one-point-six is about one-point-two-five.
Okay.
So-
Well, one-point-two-five is all we're gonna get in the TAP, so then we'd have to come up with the additional four-hundred.
Is the twenty percent.
Okay, so one-point-two, so it's, that's the total. Okay, yeah, so it's two-hundred-and-fifty then, okay. Yeah, so it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So these, these are things that, like, when, when we were talking about the capital reserve funding that other night, these are things that when we look at the CIP that I go through, and I try to project in, in the funding amounts. So that, that would be included in some of those funding amounts.
Okay.
So-
And, and just on the bike paths, just a thought, that if, you know, the bike path is heading north, we'll need a bike path heading south so they can get back again.
I have not looked at the plan.
Yeah.
Honestly have not.
Um, so, yeah, that was my concern. It is, is, how would we pay for it if we happen to get it? And what's the maintenance gonna be on the backside, once it's built?
Well, if there's a sidewalk, it falls into one of the class roads in the wintertime for maintenance.
It gets plowed?
Potentially, it could get plowed. It's not on a path to schools, so it wouldn't get plowed right away. But we would have to do it and keep it clear. Like, we have to plow all the sidewalks in Town Center after a snowstorm, and that'd be something else that we'd have to do. We'd have to keep them passable on it. And I'm sure, once we get the final determinations on the TAP grant, they have some stipulations that go along with it. You can't just do it and not maintain it. So, yeah, there's some backend, there's gonna be some backend cost to, that is gonna be included.
But there is in the sidewalks, anyway. Because whenever you construct them, they fall within three areas of our program. And they get plowed accordingly.
Bill, did you have questions?
It was just a, it was just a comment, Mr. Chairman, that I, I support the proposal, because I think, I know a lot of people were confused the last time I talked about the proposed apartment complex down behind Merrimack 360. But the connectivity piece to the center of town, not only just, you know, impacts the 360, but you've got the East Ridge condos, King Kong, Pond View, Island Drive with the crosswalk there. I mean, there's a lot of potential there. Especially where a lot of the, you know, people are gonna be, potentially be settling the southern part of town. So I think, to me, it's, it's absolutely worth the exercise to, to do this.
So connectivity is a big item in there.
Huge. Absolutely, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Nancy?
Okay, I'd like to provide a motion. Please.
Go for it.
A move to give permission to apply for the fourth TAP grant, fourth round TAP grant, and that the Town Council provide a letter of support for it. Seconded-
Motion's made by Nancy and seconded by Peter to approve the application for a round four TAP grant for sidewalks on down, Daniel Webster.
And then, I think we've talked enough about the support part. But I do wanna address, I think, Barbara's concern about the maintenance of the sidewalks. I do have a concern as well for that, because we've had conversations in the past about sidewalks in the town, where it's appropriate, where it's not appropriate. But keeping in mind that it also dramatically increases our liability, because we have to maintain it. The only reason I feel comfortable with this is this is a main thoroughfare. This is a sidewalk that will be used, and will be, as Bill indicates, will be very useful for the walking between the two. That's not necessarily true in other areas. So in this particular case, I think it's worth it.
Okay. Anybody else wanna come in? Seeing none, we'll go for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the TAP grant application, signified by saying aye.
Enter a letter of support.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seven, zero, zero? Seven, zero, zero. And that did include a letter of support from the Town Council.
Correct.
To be sent by the fifth. Do, we need everybody to sign that, or do you want me to sign that in, for the council?
Just the town manager sign that?
We could have the town manager sign it for the council? That'd be okay with?
Yeah.
Okay.
It has to go in the package. It doesn't go separate, it goes in the package.
Oh, in the package, okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
John, thank you.
Our next order of business, number two, is a request letter of support for NRPC statewide transportation planning funds grant submitted by the welfare administrator, Patricia Murphy, the Town Council to consider supporting the National Regional Planning Commission's NRPC grant application for the statewide transportation planning to evaluate community transportation programs in the greater Nashua area for feasibility of developing new volunteer driver programs to fill in the gaps of need that was identified for Merrimack in the locally coordinated plan for community transportation for the greater Nashua area.
Okay.
That's a mouthful.
That was too mouthful, yeah, yeah.
So basically, NRPC approached our welfare coordinator, Pat Murphy here, to see if we'd be interested in signing off on a letter of support. They are applying for a grant through the state to do this feasibility study. Right now, if a person needs transportation, they would call maybe Nashua, because they run the bus. And then if Nashua says, no, you don't qualify, then they would have to call another person, and another person, and another person. And it was, the onus was left on either the person or welfare directors to start calling around for, for the people. What I understand, talking to Jay McCura, the director down there, is that this would kind of make it a point person. So they'd have all that information available to them. And do a feasible study to have a point person, so that all you have to do is pick up the phone and talk to one person, and they would know where the person might be able to get transportation to and from. That is a three-hundred-thousand-foot view. Pat can get deeper into this. But, you know, basically what they're at, NRPC is asking for the town of Merrimack to support them in applying for this grant, to do this study, to see if they can, if it's a need. And then if it's a need, they would be applying through other federal grants to try to get the position filled.
Who? Okay, I'll let Pat go.
Yes, well, basically, I'm all, I'm on the regional coordinating council, which actually, we meet periodically to go over different studies and, and grants and things like that with community transportation. So this was one thing that came up during the locally coordinated planning, local coordinated plan for community transportation. And so there's money that's gonna be available to do some of the, sort of like, all right, we looked at this plan, what is the best option to try to use some planning money to see what we can do to fill in the gaps for community transportation? Merrimack was identified as having some of those gaps. And, and gaps meaning that we have the, the transit bus coming in, but it doesn't meet all the needs that are needed. Like, for example, someone needs to go to Manchester for, to go to Catholic Medical Center, or someone needs to go to the grocery store. If they don't have means of transportation, these are limitations that the paratransit bus going back and forth from Nashua doesn't always have the ability to do. So these are all little things that they're looking at with this planning grant to try to see, where can they fill in these gaps? It's not just for Merrimack, it'd be for the whole, like, greater Nashua area. So they're not really looking at coming and approaching, like us, for money. But the thing is, they wanna try to see what they can do to get, justify possibly having this kind of, what they call mobility manager, that can actually coordinate this. So what they're hoping to do is get a support letter from you guys that you would be interested in supporting this planning grant.
Okay. And, and we have in our packet a copy of a recommended support letter.
Yeah, I put together something, and with them.
So, Nancy?
I'm always for grants to study the feasibility or need. It's a no-brainer to me. It's not committing us to anything. And it is addressing a specific need. My only question was B, how is it addressing a need for Merrimack? And you've already explained that. So I have no reservation in providing a support letter for this research.
Barbara?
Yeah, agreed. I agree. I think it's, you know, it's a win-win, just. But Pat, do we know what the catchment area is for them?
Yeah, it, it's, we were just talking about it today, too. It goes like, it's very large, actually. It's not our normal catchment area.
Yeah.
It's like Palom, Litchfield, Hudson, Merrimack, Hollis, Amherst.
So it's kind of this whole southern-
Yeah, and it goes into the South Pagan Valley, Milford, you know, and then it goes out to Mason. So it really is a large area for, and a catchment area for looking at it. The biggest problem we have is that Palom and Litchfield's on the other side of the river, which is a big problem for us in trying to connect them to services. They, they have more, they have a lot of problems over there, too, but-
And, and are they going to all of these catchment towns and cities for letters of support as well?
Well, I think they were looking at coming to us, because we were identified in the plan as Merrimack, and there was one other community that, I forget which one it was. Uh, Hudson. Merrimack and Hudson as the one that had the greater gaps and needs. And so therefore, that's what they were kind of, and looking to see if we would be considering it because of that reason.
Okay. So we need a motion to-
I was gonna be, I'd be happy to do that. Do I have to read this whole thing? I would like to move the letter of support for this project. Should I read it? The transportation planning funding project by the NRPC.
Second.
So motion's made by Nancy and seconded by Barbara. Any other comments?
I think it's self-explanatory.
Okay. And so you're approving the letter that was in our packets?
Correct. I have read it.
All right.
And that'll be read into the minutes.
So if there's no other-
What? Sorry. And that will be read into the minutes as part of the-
Written into the minutes? We're not gonna read it in, right?
No. Written in.
Written in.
Yeah, written.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
And I, I have a letter, so we'll get it signed, and-
Yeah.
Do you need this sent in right away, or?
Um, I just need to, they need to submit the grant by February second, so I'd like to get it to them at least by February first, which would be Monday. So if I could actually get, I don't know if you can sign it and have it for, like, someone-
It's right here. Do you wanna deal with it, or do you wanna?
Sure, I'll take it, right. That's my only, 'cause that's why I was trying to prepare the stuff, because I knew the short turnaround.
Okay. Thank, boy, you brought a lot of documentation along. I hope you weren't thinking you needed it.
She was prepared for everything.
She was prepared, yes. Thank you, Pat. Okay, that brings us on the agenda to minutes for January seventh.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the January seventh, two thousand and twenty-one Town Council meeting minutes as presented.
And it's a short one.
As presented.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Any other adjustments or corrections? Yes? Good.
Page two.
Can you turn on your mic, please? Thank you, ma'am.
On page two, legislative updates. There was an addendum that we had regarding the committee assignments. And the addendum was that Representative Blasek was going to be on the Public Works Committee. And the Resources Recreation Development Committee was going to be Representatives Mayville, Rong, and Healy. And that was the change.
Was that, was that this day, or, that we made that change? Or was it the next budget meeting or something that we?
I think it was that one.
I, doesn't matter to me. But, but it is, it is what it is, so-
And on page three, under code enforcement, I think it's the second sentence where it says, he health officer is full-time. I think it's supposed to be the health officer. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other changes or corrections, we'll accept the minutes as corrected. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passed, seven, zero, zero. Brings us to comments from the press, or comments from the public. I did have the one letter that I received from Lorene Allen, talking about the thing, we talked about this earlier with the MBD, a House bill. Said that she wasn't gonna be able to be here, but she wanted to make sure we had that information. And I think she copied the Town Council on it. Effectively says the same thing that Lorene's letter said, to, to please support them in any way you can. So comments from the council. Barbara?
Just an update. Remember, we had talked about the fact that Comcast was gonna put a cap in place for the amount of data used? Actually Comcast announced, and we found out today, that actually, they are extending that until August. So they will not implement their cap in place on the amount of data, or terabytes, used until the August timeframe. So for those people who are listening, you're clear for now while school is in. But be aware that there may be changes come August. Also, in preparation for the two-seventy-fifth anniversary for Merrimack, I am on that committee. And one of the functions or events that we're doing is actually creating a recipe book of recipes from those of you in town, and who might want to supply family recipes. So if you have recipes from your grandmother, or great-grandmother, or other relatives who may have been here in town or otherwise, please feel free to send them along. And the, the address for that, or the email address, rather, is the two-seventy-five recipe@merrimacknewhampshire.gov. And if you're on Facebook, you'll see it there. And if you are on the Merrimack, Town of Merrimack website, go to the two-seventy-fifth Merrimack site, and you'll see the address there as well. So send your recipes and any family pictures you'd like to include. Thank you.
Okay. And so you said it is on the website? Awesome. I was gonna ask.
Were they gonna test the recipes first?
Just cookies.
Test them.
We can be the testers. Just-
Somebody's gotta do it.
Somebody's gotta do it.
My best job ever is a, I was a selectman at the time, was the pie judging over Fourth of July. It was awesome.
Is that right?
It was awesome. I wouldn't eat for two days before, so I had plenty of room.
I, I had a lady who contacted me, that she's got her grandmother's cookbook from like the nineteen thirties and forties, when Merrimack did a cookbook then.
Oh, wow.
And she's gonna send me some stuff, so-
That's pretty cool.
Very cool.
Finley?
In a similar vein of the two-seventy-fifth, I actually, Matt Kispere has had asked Chuck Moher, who sits on a segment of the committee, I guess, a subcommittee of the committee, and for the bridge, for the covered bridge. And he, Arnold Grayton is a gentleman, Grayton is a gentleman who, who does business in the state. He's up, I think in Littleton, but I could be mistaken there. But regardless, they came down, 'cause Matt Kispere had asked Chuck to try and put some numbers together so that they could have a conversation about it. And I joined him on the walk down to Twin Bridge Park to where the first road is. And it was really intriguing, talking to, Arnold Grayton didn't go down with this. He stayed in his truck, 'cause of a couple inches of snow, it was slippery. But he, he, the, Tim, the gentleman who- the gentleman who did talk to us about it, spoke about their bridge openings, if you will. They build them on-site but off, not over the brook, they build them on the side, and then they bring oxen in and actually pull them in place. And he said that they'll have 500 people show up for that event, and, and I was thinking, that's pretty incredible, but, but it made it kind of exciting, you know, talking with the guy, because it was pretty intriguing of everything they've done and what they, you know, what they're all about. It's all, all the, you know, local source, the lumber they want to get from New Hampshire and, and all the things that would go with it. But anyhow, just, I thought I'd mention that because it was kind of intriguing.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Paul?
Sorry. Did you announce Eileen being excused for tonight's meeting?
No, I didn't, but I, I, Eileen was excused from this meeting. She talked to me about it yesterday, she had some personal things to deal with, and on the seacoast, and so she wasn't going to be able to be here. So, Eileen is excused. Everybody else is present. Anything else? Sorry. Sometimes I forget. No, nothing?
No.
Okay. We're, uh.
Chair? Well, I'm sorry.
She cut me right off at the knees. No, I just wanted to do my normal public service announcement. Please continue to wear masks, be cautious. COVID-19 is not gone. Vaccines are going well, but, but obviously very limited still at this point, so, until sometime further notice, we have to continue to be very observant and careful about COVID-19, whether that requires masks or whatever, just be safe, social distance, wash your hands, all those good things. It's not time now to give up and, and get sick. So now.
Now I can move.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Peter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passed at seven zero zero. Thank you very much. Good night.